Chair Goss is excused. Vice Chair Blair. Is not present. Commissioner Sarkisian?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Swap?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Noble?
Present.
Commissioner Waters?
Present.
We have a quorum.
We'll stand, yeah, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are at the approval of minutes. Do I need to read the minutes from January tenth? Do I?
Just ask if everybody's had an opportunity to review them, and if so, you can take a motion.
Okay, I can take a motion to approve the minutes from January tenth.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed to advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter, or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Okay, new business. So we will have presentation to outgoing commission member.
Good evening. How's everybody this evening? So first, I need to apologize to Mr. Marino because we had a bit of a, we were kind of in a scramble for the last meeting of him going out and new people coming in because of, because Rich was, was not there to guide us. So we kind of had a bit of a scramble. So essentially, I'd like to call Jason Marino up here and present him with this plaque. Pretty much thanking you for your, your time for serving with us on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Appreciate it. Very kind of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone.
Good job, Jason.
Do I just go sit down, or should I say something? No, I just wanted to say that it was a real pleasure, and I think it's really important that people get involved with their city business and public service whenever they can. And I really enjoyed being part of it for the two years I was here, and enjoyed being with all of you. And I appreciate the hard work that you do, and especially you all and everyone here. So thank you so much for this, and good luck to you all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Second item of business, General Plan Amendment, GP two-three dash zero-zero-zero-one. This is a request from Silver Rock Enterprises Incorporated, applicant and property owner and Mark Blomquist Architects, PLLC, agent for the owner to amend the Kingman General Plan 2030 project land use map. The proposal is to change the current land use designation of a property from intermediate density residential, nine to sixteen dwelling units per acre, to community commercial. The subject property is in approximately five thousand square feet and is located on the west side of North Willow Road, north of Airway Avenue. The property is further described as Kingman's Airport Tract, Lot Six, Block Seven. And I'll turn the time over to Gary for more information.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. Trying to move this thing out of the way here. I'm sure it's right in the way. Anyway, the, the proposal tonight is for a minor general plan amendment, case GP twenty-three zero-zero-one. It is a companion case with a rezoning request that you'll hear after this case. So I will refer to that in this, in this presentation, and it's also explained in your, your staff report that was provided earlier. Request is to take a five thousand square foot parcel of property and change the general plan map from intermediate density residential to community commercial. I don't know why I can't see through the screen here, why this is in the way. Can you get rid of that bar? Thank you. Okay, that's much better. As the Chair mentioned, Silver Rock Enterprises is the applicant and property owner with Kurt Duncan as representative or agent, and then they, I mentioned the request. If approved, this will facilitate consideration of that rezoning case that I mentioned. RZ twenty-three dash zero-zero-one. Button, standard buttons don't seem to work. All right, here's a screenshot of the general plan map, the twenty-thirty general plan. The parcel in question is the, outlined in red with a yellow star there, so you definitely won't miss it. The parcel I mentioned was five thousand square feet approximately and is currently designated as intermediate density residential, which allows nine to sixteen dwelling units per acre. This is just north of Airway and the intersection of Harrison, where it becomes Willow Road, North Willow Road. Here's the current zoning map, which shows that the property is currently zoned R-two, which is a residential zoning district. And then below it is, in the red is the C-three zone. Current utilities and street map for you there. Again, outlined in red is the subject parcel. Adjacent to it is, available to it is a fifteen inch sewer main, eight inch water main, and it's a, at least at the point where the property is, it's a fifty foot wide right away with full street improvements. And while I'm on this photo, and I'm not sure if I'll go into it more, but the, the, this parcel is connected to all the parcels to the south, including that large commercial building just on Airway. So this is a continuation, and I'll, I'll show you a concept plan map. But just so you kind of get your bearings, this is just north of Airway again. But it's all connected with that, that commercial project at the bottom there. For a public notification of this hearing, we did send property owners notice within three hundred feet of the bound, boundaries of the property. The site was also posted with a note of, well, the general plan amendment and the rezoning request. Public notice was also placed in the Kingman Minor, and no comments have been received from the public in favor or in the negative so far. Department and agency comments, they're mentioned in the staff report. But mainly, the City Engineering Department had pointed out that adjacent driveways, based on our street standards, can be no closer than sixty feet. Striping on Willow Road would need to follow MUTC, MUTCD regulations, and the development must be in accordance with other standards listed. That's, the engineer knows that this will go through much more scrutiny as they propose something in the future, but he wanted to mention it during it, during the general plan amendment and the rezoning request, so that's on the record. Here's the site. This is from the, from Willow looking west, and in the dashed yellow lines sort of is where the property is. And of course, the zoning notice sign is there for you to see. So a lot of the land to the west is, was vacant, and to the south, and that black brick wall there is a newer single-family home. Here's from that same location, but now I'm looking south. And the, as I mentioned, that existing business, that's connected all, this is all connected to that business and ownership. So again, the subject property is in, within that dashed yellow line, and Willow Road to the left there. So again, looking south towards Airway. Okay, now I'm over at the, the business that I mentioned. Now I'm looking north towards the subject property, which I didn't bother outlining in yellow because it gets really small at that point. Oh, and of course, Willow Road on the, on the right there. As part of the application process, the applicant was, is required to go through the citizen review process, which gets early input on cases, and they did follow that process and provided documentation that we require on that. They held two meetings on December nineteenth and December twenty-first. They mailed notice to property owners within three hundred feet. They also posted an onsite sign. However, no individuals in this case attended the meeting, and therefore, there's no summary of the meetings other than the one attended, so. General Plan Amendment process. Staff has determined that the proposed amendment will qualify as a minor amendment. We have major and minor. This is a, this is determined to be a minor. To process the amendment, the general plan, or amendment to the general plan shall be approved only if the amendment is consistent with the policies and objectives of the rest of the general plan, and the proposed amendment furthers the public health, safety, and general welfare, general, where, general welfare of the citizens of Kingman. As far as review of the general plan policies and objectives, we found that land use element objective number three is addressed through this, and that says to encourage a compatible mix of land uses, which allows accessibility to goods and services without extensive travel. So ensuring there's a, there's a mix in the neighborhoods and, and the communities so that we don't just have everything over here and everything over here and have to travel. So this is a good representation of, of mixing the, the uses. The growth element, objective three, also encourage a planned mixture of land uses that provides a choice of transportation modes, which reduces automobile dependency, provides for needed public open space, and creates a sense of place. This encourages this commercial development to occur around identifiable nodes and discourage strip commercial development. The proposal for a designation of commercial, community commercial on the subject property will help to support the above stated policies and objectives. The site is centrally located in an area of needed infill development, and will serve nearby residents. As far as compatibility with other land uses in the vicinity, to the north, property is developed with multifamily dwellings. There are two parcels to the north that both have fourplexes on them. And which should note that this companion case, which is to ask to go to C-three zone, later you'll hear that. Within the C-three zone, they can actually do multifamily as well, so. Even though it's a commercial zone, you're, are able to do straight multifamily and mixed use as well. But, so the compatibility is not really an issue there. We do have standards to protect zoning, I'm sorry, properties that are residentially zoned, such as fence heights, and then also, for example, well, we have lighting standards, et cetera, that, and landscaping and setbacks. So in conclusion with that, it appears that the general plan amendment is consistent with the policies and objectives of the rest of the general plan, and will further the public health, safety, and general welfare, welfare of the citizens of Kingman. Also, in accordance with KMC two-one-three-six-five, the proposed change appears to be compatible with other land uses, existing and or planned in the vicinity. So the recommendation is to, staff recommends that the map does be amended, is amended, and that's based on the findings that the application conforms to the standards and criteria required. And the application is consistent with the objectives of the Kingman General Plan twenty-thirty. Planning staff, again, recommends the request to change the current general plan map, twenty-thirty land use designation on the subject property from intermediate density residential, nine to sixteen dwelling, dwelling units per acre to community commercial. And I believe that's it. So if you, I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Gary?
Chair Swap, Gary, I've noticed on page one of twenty-two, the recommendation says denial.
Yes, that was on page one of twenty-two?
Yeah, for this.
Yeah.
The ultimate recommendation is approval, though.
Right. That's the important one. The, the admittance is that we don't reinvent the wheel. But in not in reinventing the wheel and using templates from previous staff reports, we'd be very careful that we clean it up. So that was a mistake, and the applicant actually called and asked about that, so. We told him we'd straighten it out at this meeting, so thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else?
Yeah, Gary, I was just wondering about the use of the property. I know it is going to be a parking lot. Is that going to be a lighted parking lot?
Well, we don't have the standard, we don't have any details on the lighting right now. And in fact, I go into a little bit more detail showing, showing the concept plan and everything in the rezoning case. As this is more of a generic general plan map change, so.
I'll defer till we get to that point, then.
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend that, but yes, we don't have full details on that yet, even if you wait.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Okay, we'll open up to public comment. There's no one here for public comment, so I'd like to discuss this item of business.
Chair Commissioners, I know this road pretty well. It's how I get across town for the most part. I just know Willow is busy. I'm just curious what the impact is on this, on traffic. I imagine not much. I mean, it's a parking lot, so it's probably not going to impede the traffic too much. That'd be my only real consideration, based on what I've seen. I am interested in what Commissioner Sarkisian, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, what, where you're going with the lighting, maybe the influence on, on some of the residents locally, or?
Right, I was, thank you, Gary. I was concerned with the, the new residents that's going to be adjacent to that parking lot. That was my only concern with the, with the lighting there. I also had some concerns about the traffic impact on Willow. I consider Willow as a cut-through street, as I know a lot of people in Kingman do. And I'm assuming that that business is expanding. And I just want, I was concerned a little bit with the impact of the traffic. In the time, the traffic would be impacting Willow. So that's all I had.
Well, it seems like it's currently designated residential for nine to sixteen dwelling units per acre. I don't know how much five thousand square feet is in terms of an acre, but. What?
So we kind of need to stick to this specific matter.
Right.
So, so with this specific matter, just, just more history. Currently, right now, those are residential lots. We're asking for them applicant is asking for them that the zoning, the general plan to be changed to support an upcoming zoning to where a lot of your questions can be answered. And, and it's kind of, kind of one of those, those situations to where if we, without going into too much detail on the next matter, we, we can only give you what we've, what we've been presented to give as, as well, so.
Thank you, Sean.
A lot, a lot of the questions you're asking, I think, are going to get, to some degree, will get addressed in the next step.
Okay.
Commissioners Swap, the applicant is present in the room and would like to address the commission if possible.
Okay, so I will close the commission conversation and open up to the public.
Hello, my name is Marla Duncan. I am part of Silver Rock Enterprises. As far as the traffic is concerned, this isn't shift work. They get off at different times during the day. We are twenty-four hours, so it's not something that's going to impact Willow in a massive amount. As far as the lighting is concerned, we're willing to do whatever the ordinance requires us to do. And I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a reminder that this is just a minor change, not a major one to the city plan.
Madam Chair, may I mention something? The reason there are different cases is because on a general plan amendment, you, you cannot condition the approval. You can't say lights can't be more than ten feet in height, or you have to have a ten-foot wall, or things like that. Whereas a rezoning case, you can apply or enforce and vote on reasonable conditions of approval. So in this case, it has to be very vague because it's just a yes or no recommendation to council. Hope that explains something.
Yes, thank you. So this seems pretty simple to me. It, it seems like it's seems like a simple case. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, do we need more specification on the approval? No? Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. All in, okay, so now all in favor. So do they do that?
No. Aye. So there's a, and some of the procedural stuff we're going to go through, and we have some information on you, so I'll just kind of go through it. So when you, when you're asking for a motion, a motion is given, correct?
Okay.
Right, and then at that point, we don't always have to do a roll call vote, right? You can signify those are in favor, signify by saying aye, and those opposed, say nay. And then if there's question at that point on how many you have of either side, you can do a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion is passed. Thank you. All right.
And then, if you don't mind, I'm going to jump in here. Our city clerk, Meredith, is actually here to teach us some stuff. We have our annual compliance. I'm going to ask if we can move that agenda item up to this point, if there's any, any, anybody that's opposed to that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. This will help clarify some of those questions that you have as well. So let me get my thing here. All right, perfect. All right, for this evening, Chair Swap, Commissioners, thank you so much for letting me come to your meeting tonight. This is, like Sean shared, your annual open meeting law and parliamentary procedure training. I'm Annie Meredith. For those of you I haven't had a chance to meet, I'm the city clerk. And myself, along with my deputy, Tanya Ferguson, and city attorney Carl Cooper, deliver these on an annual basis just as a refresher, and also for any new commissioners that might be coming open. We want to make sure that you guys have all the tools and information to run your meetings efficiently, effectively, and appropriately. So we're going to jump in. If you have any questions at any point in time, please interrupt me. Ask them as they come up. I'm happy to answer those as well. So what is open meeting law? It's the public policy of the state that meetings of public bodies be conducted openly, and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings, which contains such information is reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. Toward this end, any person or entity charged with interpretations of this law shall construe any provision of this law in favor of open and public meetings. So basically, that just means that all meetings have to be held in the public, and any discussion of business, the public needs, has the right and needs to be, have the ability to attend if at all possible. Why it matters, it protects the public and preserves the right to participate in local government. It also protects you guys and maintains the integrity of our government. It ensures a better informed citizenry, and it builds trust between us and the citizens as well. Who must comply with open meeting law, each and every one of you. And open meeting law violations are, I'd like to let everybody know, are against you as an individual, not you as a commission. So should a public or an open meeting law violation occur, then you would individually be responsible for that violation. And public body is any of our boards, commissions, anything that is appointed or set aside to make decisions. That's going to include any of our quasi- That's going to include any of our quasi judicial bodies and any subcommittees that, should you guys ever determine to need one. What constitutes a meeting? It's a gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of the members of the public body at which you discuss, propose, or take legal action, including any deliberations by a quorum with respect to such action. It's a majority of the members. You're a seven-member commission, so four or more is your quorum. And vacant positions do not reduce the quorum requirement. So if you were to have any vacant positions, you would still have that same number requirement. What constitutes a meeting? In today's day and age, there are several new ways of communicating, and all of those could potentially put you at risk of an open meeting violation. This list is not extensive. It's just the most common things, email. When your recording secretary sends out an email, you want to be sure you do not reply all. That will create a quorum and could potentially be a open meeting violation. If one of you posts something on social media and another one of you hops on and says, yeah, I support this, or I also encourage you to vote this way, and another one of you pops on, and pretty soon you're at four, then you've created an open meeting violation and could be penalized for that. And that's with any of those similar types of social media themes. We, we can't tell you not to, but we highly recommend that you don't send an email to the full commission body. If there's information we want to share, better practice is for you to send it to staff or to your recording secretary and have them share it with the commission. And then just, again, be sure that you don't reply all to that correspondence. Splintering a quorum, so if a couple of you are out at lunch and you discuss a matter that is going to be coming before your commission, and then later that week, you have coffee with somebody else and you discuss that same matter, once that, that split, or all those individual little meetings come up to four people have shared the exact same discussion and information, then you've splintered your quorum. So you want to make sure that you don't do that as well. Pretty much, just make sure that if there's something that you guys need to discuss, you just get it on the agenda and you have that discussion here in public. The statute requires that no meeting take place with, with less than 24 hours notice to the public and each member of the public body, so that's you guys as well as our posting requirements for the public. The agenda has to include the date, time, and location of the meeting, and then any specific matters that are going to be discussed, considered, or decided. And then you'll see on the agendas, we put in, we call it an agenda summary. We have to include information so that when the public looks at the face of your agenda, they have a general understanding of the item that's going to be discussed. We know that there's usually a much more detailed description behind the face of the agenda, but we need to make sure that they at least understand what will be discussed or decided. And then any other manner or matter that is, is reasonably related to an agenda item, like in our previous this evening item, we were talking about a general plan amendment. There were some questions about lighting, and then you saw that we kind of redirected back to the general plan. You want to make sure that you're careful you don't stray away from the item that's being discussed and start including other things, because then, again, you could be an open meeting violation. Only items listed on the agenda can be discussed, considered, or decide, decided. If it's not on the agenda, it can't be discussed. One of the examples I'd like to give here is call to the public. If you have somebody that addresses you guys, it called to the public, and that's, you can't have a conversation with them about it. You can't have a conversation with each other about it and that kind of thing. It has to be on the agenda. And any action that you take that is found to be in violation of open meeting law is null and void. So then you would have to go through the process to bring it back again. Call to the public, it's not required. The city of Kingman does put call to the public on all of our public meeting agendas. They, again, aren't required by statute, and we do impose a three-minute time limit for speakers. You guys, like I said, you cannot respond to the person if they say, why haven't we built this, or why did you allow that? You can take that information, sit in silence, you can ask staff to bring it back for further consideration at a different meeting. You can ask them to just talk to the person, and maybe it's just, they don't have, they don't know the whole process. Once they've had their three minutes and they sit down, they don't get to come back up while you guys are having your discussion. And we've had that in some meetings where the call to the public or the public comment portion of an item is closed, the commissioners begin their discussion, and then the public decides, oh, I have more to share. Once they've been up here and they've had their time, it's not a back and forth. I'm going to pop up whenever I have something I want to say to you. They do have the right to attend, listen to, tape, record, and videotape the meetings. They do not have the right to speak unless they have signed up during the call to the public or during that public hearing process, and they don't have the right to be disruptive. Again, like I said, if you knowingly violate the open meeting law, we could be imposed with a civil penalty. If I come across something that I've noticed, I will send you a gentle reminder that just says, hey, don't forget, we don't want to respond all to emails, or you want to make sure that you're going through staff to disseminate information. And because then again, if you, if you violate it, then it's a penalty up against you. And then the whole action from that meeting is void. Conflict of interest. We are a small town, and there are due to different professions that are represented on our commissions. You could potentially have a conflict of interest. If you see an agenda item coming forward that you have a conflict with, and that's any type of monetary, financial, beneficial gain that you personally or a close family member will be getting from the approval of an agenda item, then you would want to refrain from having discussion or a voting action on that item. Your recording secretary has a form that you'll fill out. You just declare your conflict of interest, and then you just abstain from that conversation and that vote. This affects public officers and city employees. Everybody has to go, has to declare that conflict, should they have one. So just find out ahead of time if you have a conflict. You get the agenda so you can review it, and you'll know if you have some interest there. And we already went over that. If you have a remote interest, like, you know, my brother's cousin's friend's son, so you know about the project, but you're not getting any personal benefit or gain from it, then that would be a remote interest, and you wouldn't have to recuse yourself from that. These are the statutes for open meeting law and conflict of interest. Again, if you have any questions about it, you can always reach out to our office or the city attorney's office, and we're happy to have that conversation with you. Do you guys have any questions? All righty. We're going to pop right over to parliamentary procedure. Super fun and exciting. So we don't follow a strict Roberts Rules of Order for our council and commission meetings, but we do follow some of the parliamentary procedure as far as running meetings efficiently and respecting everybody's opportunity to have discussion and a viewpoint on the agenda items. And so I'm going to run through this really quick. Parliamentary procedure is just a set of rules for conduct at meetings. It allows everyone to be heard and make decisions without confusion, so it lays out that kind of roadmap or the process of the meeting. It's important because it's a time-tested method of conducting business at meetings and public gatherings. And then, like I said, we've adapted it to fit us. You can adapt it to fit the needs of any organization. This is your typical meeting order. This is the order that our meetings are ran in. So I'm not going to go through that, but you guys can see that there. Motions. So typically with our commissions, we usually just have a main motion. And there, there are other types of motions, but with the main motion, the purpose is to introduce the item to the membership for the consideration. And they cannot be made when any other motion is on the floor. They yield the privilege subsidiary and incidental motions. The other two motion types that are on here are subsidiary, the purpose to change or affect how a main motion is handled and is voted on before the main motion. And then incidental motions, and their purpose is to provide a means of questioning procedure concerning other motions. It must be considered before the other motion. So for your sake, you typically operate out of that main motion category. The life of the motion, and Sean has this down, he shared it with you. Someone will make the motion. You will get a second or not. If the motion is seconded, you offer an opportunity for any additional discussion on the matter, and then you take a vote. And we'll go through the different, the vote types as well. If you're wanting to present a motion, you obtain the floor by saying chairwoman, chairman, however. They recognize you, and you say, I'd like to make a motion to whatever it is. And you do want to give as much information as possible. That also helps your recording secretaries when they're taking the minutes. You want to make sure you speak in a clear, concise manner. We talk a lot about making sure your microphones are on. We want to make sure that if you know, that the public who is viewing the recording or the stream, as well as your recording secretaries, can go back and make sure that they document that correctly for our, our records as well. So you make your motion, you wait for somebody to second it. That can just happen naturally, or if nobody is popping up to make a motion or a second, the chairperson can call for a second. If there is no second to the motion, that motion dies and is opens up the opportunity for a different motion, should there be somebody else that maybe wanted to make a motion for a different course of action. The chairman restates the motion, so they'll say, we have a motion to approve general plan amendment, da-da-da, and a second. Is there any further discussion? And then if, if needed, you can expand on your motion. So whoever made the motion always gets the opportunity to speak first. And then the chairperson will say, are we ready to take a vote? Or sometimes this, it's not as stringent as this. It usually flows, right? So I make a motion, I second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it, motion carries, or whatever, however that plays out for you. There are the different ways you can vote. Generally, we vote by voice, so aye or nay. If it is a close vote, like the recording secretary is not able to determine how many ayes there were, who said aye versus who said nay, then we can call for a roll call vote, and they'll just go down. We keep our list in alphabetical order. Start with the chair, vice chair, alphabetical order, and just ask, and then they record it, and then they'll say if the motion carries or motion fails. And then there's an opportunity to vote by raising your hand. We don't generally do that for our meetings. There are other motions, and we do see the first one, the motion to table. If your commission decides that a matter's been brought before you and you don't have enough information to proceed or make action at this meeting, you can make a motion to table. And then it is brought back at generally the following meeting after staff has had the opportunity to supply you with the information that you've requested. There's also the motion to postpone indefinitely, which means that that motion will, that item will probably not be coming back to your commission for review. So you want to make sure you're allowing motions that are order, in order. People are obtaining the floor properly. You're not, you know, talking over each other. Speak, speak clearly and concisely. Again, don't forget to use your microphones. And then make sure you obey the rules of debate, and most importantly, be courteous. You know, there's, there can be items where we may not all agree on the course of action for it. But as a public body, we want to make sure that we are being considerate of everyone's viewpoints and thoughts when we are deciding our business. And that is that. Are there any questions on parliamentary procedure? All right, thank you so much for letting me come this evening and bumping me up on the agenda. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Meredith. And I promise, any mistakes I make are not deliberate. Okay, we will move back to our new business. We are at rezoning case RZ 23-0001. This is a request from Silver Rock Enterprises Incorporated. Applicant and property owner and Mark Blumquist Architects, PLLC, agent for the owner to rezone a property from residential multifamily, low-density, R2, to commercial service business, C3. The subject property is approximately 5,000 square feet and is located on the west side of North Willow Road, north of Airway Avenue. The property is further described as Kingman's Airport Tract Lot 6, Block 7. And I will turn the time over to Gary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just trying to get this PowerPoint pulled up. Not sure where everything went. Thank you. Appreciate that. So this is, as was mentioned, rezoning case. This is the companion case to the the previous general plan amendment case you just heard. And I'd like to make it clear that on the general plan case and this case, rezoning, both of those types of land use cases, your decision is a recommendation to the city council versus other land use decisions like conditional use permits, where you make a final decision on those. On this rezoning case, RZ 23-001, the request is to go from multi-fa, R2, which is residential multifamily, low-density, to commercial service business, which is our C3 zone. The applicant is the Silver Rock Enterprises with Kurt Duncan as agent. Here's the general plan map, which may look familiar. Outlined in red is the subject property of approximately a 5,000-square-foot lot. And the subject property is the intermediate density residential at nine to 16. Actually, based on your previous decision, this, for the purposes of the staff report and this decision, because it follows in time, this can be looked at for purposes as community commercial at this point. If, if you understand where I'm going with this. So because it has to meet the, the general plan, and now that you've heard that case and made a decision on it, it'll all be dependent on what the council decides, but for these purposes, that is now community commercial. The zoning map, the property is currently zoned R2. And the property to the south is C3, commercial. Utilities, we've gone over these. There is access to water and sewer in Willow, which the property is at intersection of Airway and Willow and Harrison, I guess. And again, the property is owner, under the same ownership as the properties to the south and that larger commercial property on this variant, and just north of Airway. A 50-foot right-of-way for the street improvements and full street improvements. The notification we did for the 300-foot boundary for property owner surrounding, and then the site was posted. And the notice was put in the Kingman Minor, and no comments have been received as of, well, today. The department and agency comments, the only significant one was, of note, was the city engineering department. And it's more outlined in the staff report, but again, the city engineering wants to make sure that it's noted that during the concept plan review and the site plan review, future phases of development, that adjacent driveways per our street standards can be no closer than 60 feet from each other. Striping and Striping and Willow Road will follow the MUTCD regulations, and then all development will all development will need to be in accordance to those listed regulations. Here's some site photos again. The looking to the west, the property is bounded by that yellow dashed line. Generally, to the right or north is the, that's the fourplex, and beyond that, just north is another fourplex. To the west here is a vacant lot, and then, as I mentioned earlier, there's, in that black wall there, that's a single-family home. Looking south from that same point, Willow Road's on my left, the subject property is listed or pointed out there, and then that, the existing businesses to the south pointed out there. And then, also from that business to the south, I'm looking north now, subject property is pointed out, and Willow Road's on my right there. And just let me know if you need to come back to any of these photos for reference again. The applicant did go through the citizen review process, which was, they required, required two public meetings on the 19th of December they held and on the 21st of December. The method for notification included the 300-foot notice, as well as property sign being posted on-site, but no individuals attended that meeting, those meetings, and the summary of the meeting is, there was none. So, here, here's what you can see in the zoning case. It's more relevant here because, as we're talking about lighting and different standards, streets, traffic, some of those things, you, you can actually put as conditions of approval as long as they're reasonable. You can place those on, on a case like this. And then, so future develop, future development would have to follow those, those conditions. Here's a concept plan, so showing that not only is that property hatched up there, that's the 5,000-square-foot subject property. It's, it's, yes, it's shown on this concept plan as parking area, along with those lots to the south. And then, that blue area is actually the expansion. They want to do a building expansion there. So, I believe it's about 7,500, yeah, 7,500-square-foot expansion there, which of course would require more parking, which is, is why they're here. Again, I can come back to this if you'd like. You can also point out there that city engineer, because concept plans are fluid, we're not sure 100% how it's going to line up and everything, but the driveways there may be too close to each other, and I think that's what the engineer was pointing out. The purposes of the request, as I mentioned, was to, well, in the words of the applicant, was to expand the 4,500, 4,800-square-foot, single-story Silver Rock Enterprises Kingman office with that new 7,500-square-foot, single-story addition. The analysis for rezoning is, again, it's a recommendation to the council, but it is to approve, approve with modifications and/or conditions, or deny. Those are the recommendations you can make. And the map, the zoning map may be amended only if the following findings are made. One of them is the general, the proposed amendment is consistent and conforms with the goals of the general plan and applicable specific plans. In the companion case, and I explained this at the beginning of this, it is for intensive, all intents and purposes, this is now a community commercial designation on the general plan, so a C3 request for a C3 zoning would comply with the community commercial designation. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, convenience, or welfare of the city, and will add to the public good as described in the general plan. Pointed out here is the proposed C3 zoning is consistent with the community commercial designation. The C3 zone, I mentioned this earlier, also allows for multifamily residential if, if the property owner decided to do that in the future. The zoning will encourage infill development on the overall site. So, those different parcels that some of them might, may be too small for commercial development, combined though, they can start to really provide us that infill that's desirable for, for the community, which is also an objective of the growth area, growth area element of the general plan. The affected site is physically suitable in terms of design, location, shape, size, operating characteristics, and provision of public emergency vehicle, access, public service and utilities, protection, public protection, police protection, potable water, school, solid waste collection and disposal, storm drainage, wastewater collection, treatment and disposal. I think I read all that. To ensure that the requested zone designation and the proposed or anticipated uses and/or development will not endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the property or improvements in the vicinity in which the property is located. The site is found to be physically suitable for development of commercial or multifamily residential. The site is relatively flat and has access to an improved street. The site has access to sewer and water infrastructure, and any development will follow the city's established review, review process to ensure our various standards designed for safety and compatibility with adjacent properties will, will occur. And based on the submitted application and public input, staff analysis was able to find that the proposed amendment complies with the required criteria of the zoning code for changing the zoning map. And therefore, planning staff recommends that the commission recommend approval of the request to change the zoning of the subject property described from residential multifamily low-density to the commercial service business C3, subject to the following condition. And that is, the subject property or parcel shall be combined with at least the abutting property to the south, which is currently under the same ownership. This will prevent the city from approving a site that would be in violation of Table 3-3 dot 030A lot requirements, which requires lot sizes and dimensions to be at least 7,500 square feet and at least 75 feet in width. In other words, this, because this lot is 5,000 square feet, it's 50 feet wide, it's an island unto itself right now. It's not combined with anything else. And if this rezoning took place, it really can't because we'd be violating our code because the lot has to be 75 feet wide, and it has to be at least 7,500 square feet. But if with this condition, it's at least combined to the property to the south, another parcel of 5,000 square feet, then it would meet that standard and we'd be okay there. But we just can't approve this at its current size unless it's combined as conditioned. So, I'd recommend that at least that condition go with your recommendation if you choose to approve. And then, of course, any discussion on any other topics such as lighting or anything like that, that you might want to impose as well. But with that, I'll stand for questions.
So, just a clarification on our, do, should we be making recommendations at this point about what they can and can't do on that, or is this just a rezoning?
This is a rezoning. They're supposed to provide a concept plan. You're supposed to kind of know what's happening. You want to keep it sort of generic, because what if this is rezoned to C3, but then in five years, somebody changes and wants to build a fourplex there or something, which would be allowed. So, yes, you can condition, but if you make a condition, make it generic enough, such as lighting, that it can apply to any development that goes there.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, thanks. That's helpful. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Commissioner, I'd like to get some clarification on the north end of the parking lot. The area is shaded in green. Could I get an explanation for what that is?
That, and the applicant is here, of course, and they can explain that, but at first glance, it would be to probably address the stormwater detention that's going to be required, but that'll have to be figured out. I mean, this, if this is rezoned C3, that very well could be where the building is. You know, but depending on drainage and everything, that's probably a more prime spot.
What is the heading on that, Gary? I can't make it out from here.
It says landscape rain garden.
Okay.
Which would just be landscaping, but probably would address storm drainage as well.
Was that the only provision made for water drainage off the parking lot?
At the concept level, it's really hard to nail down how much they would need to provide, so I think this is just for discussion purposes, how much they've shown here.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to jump in there on that. When it comes to drainage, that, that is determined based upon the impervious surface, right? So, if they're adding so much surface, whether it be a parking, the parking lot, roof, or something like that, they then have to provide drainage based upon that calculation of what they're adding to it. So, they have to keep all that water on that, on that property, right? So, that's what that drainage would come into play there, so.
Okay. One other thing that I had noticed about that property, there's a one-foot elevation I'm assuming that, should I be assuming that the water would be draining toward the north?
I believe it goes to the northeast, but I could be corrected on that.
Yeah, they can, they can.
They'll have to.
When it comes down to building, they don't have to go with the natural route is. They can, they can redirect that water however it's engineered to be redirected, right? So, at, at this point, we can't sit here and say, "Well, the water is going to go this way," right? Because they could, they can have some kind of design that comes in that has the water going a different direction, as long as they're able to retain that and/or comply with what our codes are when it comes to drainage, right? We can't say, we can't, we can't really answer that, so.
I was thinking about a worst-case scenario, i.e. the past monsoon season.
Right.
And my concern there was that residence that is being erected next to the parking lot.
Okay. Yeah, and so, so currently, right now, what is in place and what is being, what is being, being used is based upon the 25 and 100-year floods, right? It's, it's the determination on how, the calculations that are used for that. Even mind, the storms that we've had have been well beyond the 100-year mark, right? So, we could take that into consideration, but it's kind of an anomaly, right? The chances of that happening again for the next 125 years is very, very, very low, so just keep that, keep that in mind as well.
Okay. Currently, there is, would there ever be an allowance for a provision off of Wells for an entrance? Is that Wells Street there next?
North Wells.
To the left. Yeah. Is that Wells Avenue or Wells Street? I'm not sure.
Yeah, Wells Street. Just want to make sure we have that right.
So, you're asking if there would be a provision for a driveway there?
We currently see an entrance, and I'm assuming an exit right there on Airway, not Airway, I'm sorry, Willow. But I was wondering if there would be anything on the other side of the property.
Well, the applicant could talk about what their plans are, but there, there's been different iterations of, of this layout of this concept plan. So, it's still being developed in their minds as they become more familiar with our standards and requirements. So, ultimately, there could be an access on there. Maybe even these parking lots connect from east to west. We don't know that yet, because there has been different layouts that they've, they've shown to us in pre-application meetings, et cetera.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Chair Schwab, Gary, the, there was the adjacent driveway limitation at 60 feet, which there was a concern expressed by the city. That would be addressed later for the commission, or it's just like a promise that it's going to be addressed at some point?
No, it would, it's a, it was pointed out by the city engineer, basically saying this current iteration of the concept plan, he believes those are too close, and that they, they need to make sure that as they move forward, they're going to have to incorporate that in their, in their ultimate plans, that, because this will be scrutinized by staff and make sure all the regulations are followed.
Yeah, again, just my concern is that road, Willow in particular, it's, it's very tight, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary. Any other questions for Gary? Thank you for your time.
Chair, I would just recommend that if you make a motion either to support what was presented by staff, that you either read the condition that's added there and whatever other conditions, or you can even say, "As staff has, has provided," to make it easier for you to.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we will open up to public comment.
Carla Duncan with Silver Rock Enterprises. This is a concept. We do eventually want to have an entrance and exit on Wells. So, it is one of the plans that we are looking for. It is vegetation that is around there and all of that for the drainage as well. We are working with the architect, so I just wanted to bring those up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open up for commission discussion. Does anyone have any discussion about this case?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve rezone 23-0001 with the single staff recommendation requiring the combination of the lots, the two northern lots.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, it appears that rezoning case 23-0001 with staff recommendation has been approved. We have gone through the annual training. Are there any announcements by commission members? This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Okay, it appears there's, there are no announcements. So, I will adjourn the meeting. Do I?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.